And that toward the end of the year, as we run out of money, which we usually do, that we supplement the budget this year with those funds.
Okay. Any questions from the committee? What was the expectation level for these advertisements? How did we come about doing it? Were we, did we expect that, this was unexpected, obviously, that these bills would come out?
Oh, yes. Projection-wise, we go over that in the budget every year and estimate. I try to, I tend to estimate high. Mr. Iannella does more of an average. Director Iannella, I should say, does more of an average. I think last time we met, it comes out somewhere about $12,000 a year, up to $15,000. I think the highest I'd seen was $19,000 a year.
So it's not as though we can't pay these bills, we have to pay these bills?
I'm sorry?
It's not as if we, we have a real choice here, we have to pay these bills. These are bills that-
No question about that.
You have to pay them, right? Hold on. Is there any questions for the clerk or a motion? Is there a motion at table?
Motion to send to the full council.
Motion is sent to the full council with a-
Favorable recommendation.
Table recommendation has been made?
Second.
And second. No further discussion. I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Thank you, councilors.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Document 332-16, authorization, excuse me, authorization to expend grant funds from McGovern Foundation of $10,000. This was awarded to the Lawrence Public Library. Mr. Boskow, who is the acting library director, hello, how are you?
Hi, sir. How are you?
Fine, thank you. A little explanation what this is about?
Sure. First of all, this is my first grant as an acting director. This foundation gave us $10,000 for having 10 hotspot devices. And we are going to purchase 10 hotspot devices, actually from Verizon. And then they are not charging for the device, and we are just going to pay them for the service. And this $10,000 will be enough for two years. And our patrons will be available to check out. And this is a brand-new product, and entire country hotspot device is very important at this moment, and we are going to have 10 of them.
Okay. So is this grant for the main library?
The hotspot, I mean, everybody can, will keep in the main library.
Okay, that's one, that's the question.
And then whoever has the Lawrence Public Library card, you'll be able to check out.
Will this allow us to save some money on the broadband contract that we have, whether it's Verizon or Comcast?
No, no, no. This is a hotspot device for-
Internet.
Cell phone.
Sure.
Or somebody has computer at home, but they don't have internet access. And when you get hotspot device, you are going to, able to use internet access. Or you might have cellphone, but your internet access finished, your time finished, and you want to go to vacation for one week. You can come to the library, you can check out this hotspot device, and you'll be able to use it as a free of charge. And we are the fourth library in Merrimack Valley having this great product.
Say that last part again, with the which library in the Merrimack Valley, the first one?
Beside us, Lovell has it for public, and Mettwain has it, but they, they use only for themselves. And then Champsworth has it, and we are going to Fort One.
And when do we expect to install this?
When you approve, they are ready.
Okay, very good. Questions, comments, motions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. President?
How long will patrons be able to use-
Excellent question. You know, I always ask other directors when we have the new products, how do they act? And most of them, they are giving for one week. Like we give for one week for DVDs, CDs, same thing, for one week.
Okay. And if the, if the patron was not to return the device, how will we handle it?
Another excellent question. For, of course, they have to pay. But good news is Verizon is going to replace free device. So the patron will still pay, they have to pay. Like the day, if they do, if they don't return DVDs, if they don't return books, same things, fees.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr.-
Entertain a motion?
Motion to send up to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion made?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations on winning the grant.
Good job.
338-16, a supplemental budget for FY 2007. This is pay for the fire pumper grant match for $50,000. Fire breathing apparatus grant match for $32,000. Eight new crosswalk signals presented by Mr. Iannella.
Good evening, councilors. As you can see here, the, I explained in my memo, the pumper truck and the fire breathing, fire department breathing apparatus requires a 10% federal match, or a city match on a federal grant. So the fire pumper truck was $500,000, so we need to provide $50,000 as a city match to get that truck. And for the breathing apparatus, it's a $325,000 grant. Our city match is $32,541. So those are the two main purposes of this, of this supplemental budget. The third item on the supplemental budget is for DPW to purchase eight, approximately eight crosswalk signals, automated crosswalk signals, for total cost of $80,000. So we're looking for a supplemental appropriation of $162,541.
And unlike most of the other budget and finance items, this is supplemental budget, and by our charter, I believe, or by ordinance, that we have a timeframe by which we need to act on this document by the full council. I think it's 45 days, I think it's October 15th, is it the date?
Yeah, I believe supplemental budget, the, the city budgets in general, 45 days. I think the supplemental budget is the same. I think there's a, something on the council agenda that requires you to act within 30 days, but-
Okay.
I think in this particular item, you get 45.
Sure, so we will take care of that under either way, so that shouldn't be a problem.
The time issue here is we just don't want to lose the, I don't, you know, I don't, we're not in any hurry to get the appropriation, but the fire department would like to purchase this pumper truck, and they don't want to lose the grant money. So if it weren't to be approved, that would be problematic for their grant.
The chair's got a few comments, but I'm opening up to the floor to my colleagues first before making a couple of comments. Are there any comments or suggestions or a motion?
I think a motion to send up to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion made?
Second.
And second. Discussion. Council president?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When, Mr. Iannella, through you, Mr. Chair. When I look at the, at the letter from the fire department, he specifically addresses two grants. The one for the fire pumper and the one for the fire breathing apparatus. But the one for the eight new crosswalks are not listed in the letter submitted by Chief Maviad.
That's for DPW, not the fire department.
And do we have something for?
And, no, I just explained it down below. It's addition for public safety purposes. DPW seeking funds to purchase eight new flashing crosswalk signals with pedestrian activated buttons. Estimated cost is $10,000. I was able to get a picture of approximate, of kind of what they look like. You know, they're, they have a flashing light, I guess. This is the type of thing that the DPW would like to purchase.
Would you please present that to the council committee? And what I would like to do with your indulgence is to make a copy of that and include that as part of the record, so our colleagues can see a picture of that when they debate this at the full council level.
That will be helpful. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Iannella.
Any other comments by committee members? So just a couple of quick comments on the uses. This fire pumper truck, a federal grant, I want to look to my colleague, Mr. Abdi. We had a conversation with the fire chief within the past week. I believe he was talking about this pumper truck and that this is a first-run pumper truck that's, I believe, in Brookline, someplace close by. And as long as, as soon as we get the money, we are going to get essentially a first-run, really with all the bells and whistles and then some, at a very, very low price. A pretty, pretty good deal. Is that your recollection of the conversation?
That is, at the South Lawrence West Naval Association meeting Monday night. He mentioned that a, several trucks were ordered, purchased, manufactured, and the large city that had ordered them backed out of the deal. He was at a, I believe it was Maryland, he was down at a conference. The opportunity arose, and he put Lawrence in for one, the truck is ready. It's here in Massachusetts, in Bellingham, I believe, Hopkinton. The truck is presently here in Massachusetts in Hopkinton. He's just waiting for the money from Mr. Iannella after we approve it.
Well, if I could clarify that discussion, there's actually, this pumper truck is a different pumper truck, not the one you just spoke of. This is on a federal grant, so they would have to order this truck. The one you're talking about was, was approved by the council last week on September 6th, the capital improvement Pago capital item. And it was a $480,000 for a pumper truck. That's the pumper truck we're getting about $100,000 discount on, because it's first run, it's leftover, and they've been holding it for several months. So we're just waiting for, we didn't have the council waive the 30 days. I think it was in my memo. We often forget that, so I'm just waiting for 30 days and so we can purchase that pumper truck.
So you, I'm sorry, do you, you, Mr. Chair, and I realize it's now off topic a little bit, but, so when we approve these, even on the supplemental or on the capitals, the 30-day waiting period before you can expend?
Well, the 30, the approval of the 9/6 meeting, September 6th, last week's meeting, was to approve the capital improvement purchase of these Pago capital and appropriate the funds from the capital reserve to these specific capital accounts to purchase those items. And every council authorization has a 30-day waiting period.
So even the monetary?
That's my understanding, it's a unique-
I'm still going to play the new card, the new guy card?
Yeah, I wish Bill was here, he could probably explain it. But I believe all actions of the council require the 30 days to be waived.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. So regard, so this is good background information, but the end result of this thing is we're finally getting the apparatus that we need with the trucks, the pumper trucks, at our fire stations, which should give our citizens a greater of, what's the right word? Comfort in knowing that, that we'll be more efficient in providing for them kind of fire service protection that, that we need as a city. So this is good news for the people that we all represent. We want to see them have, our firefighters, of course, working on good trucks, but also more, frankly, as importantly, making sure that our citizens are protected, so. And the other thing is that we're getting this breathing apparatus, we're just getting all brand-new ones, or getting rid of the old ones, and this is the new ones, is my understanding.
I guess they have a replacement.
Right.
They only last 10 or 15 years, and they have to be replaced. So to get a Lieutenant Macaron, the chief has given a lot of credit to Lieutenant Macaron, Paul Macaron of the fire department, for getting all of these grants. And this was a real savings to the fire department to get a $300-plus thousand grant and using that for, to replace the SCBA, can't remember what it's called, but it's breathing apparatus.
And we just talked about the crosswalks, and that's great news. But one of the things is of some interest is we, where we are getting money on the motor vehicle excise, and that's an increase, substantial increase, $162,000 over our estimated revenue projections. And so I've been talking to a few folks inside City Hall about automobiles, and how we have had a dramatic increase-
Yes.
-of the number of newly registered automobiles in our city to the tune of about 7,000 new vehicles over the last four years, is my understanding, in that ballpark.
I've heard those numbers upwards of 5,000. I have the financial numbers for you, if you'd like, just, just as an example. In FY, in FY 13, just four years ago, we collected approximately $3.2 million worth of motor vehicle excise. And FY-
What year was that? What year?
It was FY 13, 3.2 million. FY 14 was 3.8 million. FY 15 was a little over 4 million, stabilized somewhat. And last year, FY 16 was 4.7 million.
I'll ask the obvious question, of which I think we all kind of know the answer to. Why is the, why are the numbers going up?
Obviously, new vehicle, people are either purchasing new vehicles, or there's more vehicles on the market, but some of it is past collections, perhaps, but the numbers are pretty, are pretty consistent. You know, when they don't pay their motor vehicle excise tax, we mark them at the registry, so when they go to renew, they have to pay any back excise taxes they may not have paid. But it doesn't appear to be any blips of that nature in this particular category. So, you know, the, the revenues, motor vehicle excise revenues that we're collecting is, is pretty much because of the current excise bills. There's just a lot of, a lot of activity out there. I can't, I don't know if it's new car sales, or just a lot of different people moving into the city. That has also been offered. We might have a lot more people in the city than the last census indicates.
So our city assessor, in my conversations with him, states to me, and this is a quote, there were 8,700 new motor vehicles registered in the past four years. 8,007 new cars, additional cars, on the streets in the last four years. And then sometimes as city policy planners, we start thinking about traffic, we start thinking about parking, we start thinking about these kinds of issues. When we add an additional 8,000 new vehicles, while it's great on the excise portion, and we're bringing in more money, that's fantastic. We're able to pay for some of these things, this is, that's good. On the flip side, are we prepared as a city to be able to absorb these many new vehicles? And I don't know if we have, I mean, I know I get a lot of phone calls regarding parking issues. I can't park here. And I've heard that getting through the city at various times a day is horrendous because of traffic issues, so I hear those kinds of things. I don't know what we can do as policymakers, except that when we start talking about new places, adding or creating more infrastructure for housing, there's an impact here. So if we have more housing, more cars, probably, so these are things that we have to kind of weigh. And it, it has a real impact, obviously, on the people that we represent, who just want to park near their house, who just want to get across the city in a reasonable amount of time, who don't need the frustration of waiting, and waiting, and waiting at certain spots. And it, it, it takes away from their quality of life, so. I'm not sure if you have any, council have any thoughts on that? Mr. Iannella, I'm not sure what we can do, except to point it out and be mindful as we go forward when we get new housing things, for example, or parking situations, where we start saying, okay, we take away a single family, we're going to put a three-family there. Well, where are people going to park? When the zoning board makes variances on certain things, they have to ask, where are people going to park? More cars coming in. Populate, and the other point is, are we being undercounted in our census? It's a bigger issue, right? I don't know if that's in fact the case. Our census now says we have 80,000 people. We have 8,000 more cars in the last four years, our last census. I mean, I'm not sure that census is accurate. Anyway, food for thought, fodder for discussion, but I just throw it out there. So there, if there's no discussion, there's a motion on the floor. It has been made, and it has been seconded. I'll call it now. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Mr. Iannella.
Welcome. Thank you.
Let's see here. Oh, you've got one more item here. It's 339-16. This is financial review for the quarter ending June 30th, 2016, or as we call it, the final quarter.
So councilors, as we did the last quarter, these are the budgeted funds. The general fund, the parking garage and lots enterprise fund, the airport enterprise fund, and the water sewer enterprise fund. So there's a revenue, year-to-date revenue and year-to-date expenditure report for each of those funds attached. City comptroller Ramona Sobalos prepared these reports, so between the two of us, we should be able to answer any questions that you may have regarding what the numbers look like or how to read the report.
So I'll start this off, I guess. We just talked about the automobile excise tax. Can you show, I see it on page one and two. Can you show me where our end-of-the-year number is on that, on that revenue side?
They are, and you can see them on page, the bottom of page one of general fund revenues page, in the top of, most of page two.
So help me understand, how much do we, how much do we plan for or project, and how much do we actually bring in?
And in this particular year, we projected, for budget purposes, we projected middle of page, 3.3 million, and we collected, well, we collected, I had that earlier, all of the collections. You can see the collections by year here, but I haven't tallied here.
I don't see the 3.3? Oh, I do now. This is remaining revenue. Where, I don't see the 3.3 million dollars.
So if you look at the middle column, revised estimated revenues for-
Page two?
Yep, page two, middle of the page. There's $3,281,665. That was the estimated receipts for motor vehicle excise last year. And in FY 16-
3.2.
In FY 16, we collected, you can see next to that, those are FY 16 excise bills. We collected $3,600,000. And then we collected $900,000 from the previous year, because they do straddle years. And we collected $128,000 for FY 14, and so on up the page.
Oh, I see.
So the total of those, of those collections were for 4.7 million in total.
And where do you see the 4.7 million?
It, you have to add them up. I just, I added them up.
But for this current year, the percentage collected was over 100%? It was a 1, 109.3%?
Yes.
And I'll ask another question, and then we can move on, which is, there's a lot to absorb here. There's a lot of information.
A lot of detailed information.
What sticks out at you is, whether it's good news or things that you think that you should draw our attention to, and we should at least be mindful this could be a concern?
I would point the councilors, I think the, the number to look at here is for each of the subcategories or the subtotals, these are subtitled state revenue, other, well, let's start on page one. The first category is taxes and excise, number 41, taxes and excise on page one. They're subtitled on page two. And you can see that the estimated receipts on page two were $68,000, but we collected $70,000. So we exceeded the budgeted projections for revenues. And for each of those categories, those are the, there's a lot of detail here, here for each of the revenue categories that we make collections on. But it does begin with taxes and excise. The next category is charges for services. The next category is licenses and permits. Then federal revenue, which generally grants, or in this case, the, from the, this is Medicaid reimbursements from, for school students. Then we have state revenue, which is generally state aid. And other intergovernmental revenue, which you can see are court fines and parking fines. And then miscellaneous revenue, which has a little bit of everything. But grand total overall, we had a $281 million estimated receipt budget, and we collected $291 million, so we exceeded that by $9 million, a favorable variance.
You said 290, 280 was our expenditures, or 282?
And two, roughly 282 million.
282, so that's a $9 million surplus, essentially, that we have in our budget.
Well, it's not, not technically a surplus, but it's, we've, our revenues exceeded our budget. And for these, for this particular line item, okay?
Okay. What's the technical term?
That's good. Well, maybe, because the budget is, there's also the expenditure side of things, so. Those are revenues and expenditures.
So we took in 9 million more than what we spent?
More than we estimated, not more than we spent.
Okay. Let me go back, because I need to learn this.
So-
Page two, how much did we spend?
That's in the next ca, the next category of general fund expenditures. And, and again, we broke that out. This ca, these pages are pretty much the, broken up by department. Starts on page one of that report with city council, then mayor, budget and finance, city attorney, and so on. And there are, I believe, seven pa, seven pages, and on page seven, you'll see the totals for the general fund. So we've expended, the grand total for the general fund was 280 million. And there's another eight, roughly 7.9 million encumbered, for a total of approximately 289- 289 million, 290 million or so.
Okay, so let me put it in layman's terms. We brought in $291 million in revenue, and either we've spent or we've encumbered 290 million.
Roughly, yes.
That's an estimate. And so in layman's terms, I would consider that a million dollars extra. I'm going to say surplus, but you're going to correct me, and I'm going to say something else.
Well, it, it's, yeah, it's in excess. Excess revenues over expenditures do go to our fund balance, so that does end up in surplus.
And that money, that approximately 1 million dollars goes to free cash?
It'll end up in free cash, yes. Be added to last year's free cash that was unexpended. So that, that breakdown that I just reviewed for the general fund, there's a, again, a general, there's a revenue report, and then there's an expenditure report showing budget to actual for each of the other funds. So next in your packet is the parking garage and lots fund, and then there's the airport, and then there's the water sewer fund. It's a, we did it in the same format. I think this is exactly the same format we've done for several, a couple of years now.
And the obvious question is, because by law we're required to, there's been no over expenditures, all, every one of these enterprise funds are off, have been, the monies have been spent have been under budget or on budget, and not overspent their budget.
The, the enterprise funds have retained, we have free cash in the general fund, the enterprise funds have retained earnings, so if they do overspend, they have to use their prior year balance, if you will, retained earnings and use it. So they all have healthy balances. And I know the airport plans on using some of their retained earnings this year, because they're doing, it's the match for all the $10 million worth of airport grants that they've received. So they've planned on using several hundred thousand for that, of their retained earnings to provide the grant, whatever grant, airport matches they need to get those runways redone.
Did any of these enterprise funds need to dip into their retaining funds to pay for their operating budget as opposed to capital or bigger projects?
Uh, no, they, they come to the council for a vote of that, and I think they, I'm trying to think, I think the water sewer department last year, I don't have it with me, they might have come down to the council and asked for some, some amount from retained earnings, 300,000 or 400,000 seems to ring in my mind. I know in the past year or so, they did come down to the council and used roughly a million, I think, of retained earnings of the water sewer for some other project that they needed. But they would come down to the council for a vote. Just like when we want to use free cash, we have to come down to the council and ask for it.
Is the retained earnings amount on these, on this information?
Uh, no, there's not on this. This is just the revenues and expenditures of each of the funds. But I do have a spreadsheet showing the free cash and then the retained earnings for each of the funds. I just didn't bring that with me.
So I, I'm, I'm curious, we don't need to go through it tonight, but if you could just supply the committee that information?
Yep.
By email, that would work. And if they're interested, they'll look at it. Sure, they'll take a look and just to get an idea of what, what kind of outstanding monies are each one of these organizations, I guess, or divisions? Parts of government have in their retained earnings, or as we call on the city side, you said, free cash. That'd be helpful. Any other, oh, any comments by the committee members? If not, this is one of those items that just gets to be sent up without a recommendation, and we can just withdraw it at the full council level. Is there a motion to send this up to the full council without a recommendation? This is merely advisory.
So move.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have it. Marie, if you wouldn't mind encouraging some of the stuff that's on here, for example, the gear storage rack information is on here. If you could just take this out of the packet, some of these things, for example, all the stuff from July 12, except for 23916, which we're about to do, has been taken out. So we don't have that on our agenda anymore.
Which one, 23916?
July 12, 2016, so 23216, 3316, 23816, those top three are no longer need to be on there. They've already been disposed of by this, by the full council. But 23916 will remain there, because we're about to go there right now. Our motion to take document 23916 off the table?
So move.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have it. 23916 is a clear government, or ClearGov, excuse me, presentation. This is put on the city council agenda by Council President Vasquez. Councilor Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So on July 12, 2016, we had, we had a presentation by ClearGov that described a, a system that they have that will provide transparency in, when it comes to financial spending and revenue sources for the city of Florence. I think that this will be a, a very good tool for the city, and this, not the city, but the citizens primarily, to utilize, to be able to better understand where the finances of the city are going. This will allow us to showcase specifically where we're getting our money from and how we're spending our money by each individual department. It is very specific as to how the use of it could be accomplished. And we have a representative today from ClearGov that I think will be, will be, you know, of great asset and able to provide us with additional information in regards to the software.
Very good. And we, we have a, we have a presentation, or someone able to answer some question on this. Before we get that, I just want to read quickly an email that, that both the council president and I received from Charles Body with respect to the ClearGov, ClearGov presentation, so we know what the ground rules are, in case there's any questions. This is from City Attorney Charles Body on August 26th of this year. "I received your email requesting, request concerning the purchase of informational and analytical material from Massachusetts cities and towns at a price of $8,000. The council vice president is correct. This purchase is governed by chapter 30B of the Massa, Massachusetts general laws concerning the purchase of goods and services by cities. The law states that for purchases of less than $10,000, the city must use sound business practices. Thus, if the total cost of the services you are considering purchasing is $8,000, you may purchase the data without any public or competitive bidding based upon sound business judgment. Signed, Charles Body." Go ahead, you're up.
Good evening, councilors. I'm here today proposing, as President Kendra Spaske was mentioned, a financial transparency and benchmarking platform. As you can see, financial statements are not only very complex and confusing for the average citizen, but often for internal stakeholders to really get your arms around the data. ClearGov transforms financial information into very easy-to-understand infographics that not only break down the, the data in easy-to-understand charts and trending graphs, but also benchmarks against similar communities. So for instance, myself, hailing from Hopkinton, as a citizen, I was curious as to how much we were spending on education. I could very clearly see that the town was spending $55 million on education, but as an average citizen, it's very difficult to get your arms around that, head around that number. What you want to know is, how does that break down on a personal level? And then also, how does that compare to similar communities in the area? Is it high or low? And, and really, ClearGov can, to help not only inform the public as they look to vote on initiatives, but also internal stakeholders, such as councilors, department heads, et cetera, really get context to the data and make more informed and data-driven decisions. So what we're proposing here today is actually a two-part system. One is a public-facing breakdown of the data into infographics, again, breaking down both audited data, but also you can post a budgeted data if you'd like to share that, and allows you to actually drill down to the data, all the way down to the account level line item detail, if you'd like. Even towns like Brookline are making check level detail available. It's all customizable per your request. And it also provides context in the form of benchmarking, as well as context through demographics, so people can see what are the dynamics that are changing in the towns and, and cities that are affecting the decisions that the, the council makes, as well as giving you the opportunity to actually lend some color in the form of commentary to all the metrics. As we know, every number has a story behind it, and sometimes numbers by themselves and trending and charts can even be misleading. And oftentimes, there's a very simple explanation as to why a number is rising, or why there's a spike in a number that may not be so obvious by just looking at financial statements. So really, our platform has become a communications platform for cities like yourselves to, to actually better tell their financial story and build public trust and understanding. The second part of what we're proposing today is also included in that figure that you had mentioned earlier, is a, a back office benchmarking tool. So ClearGov is literally building the, the world's largest municipal finance database in Massachusetts. We collect data from the Department of Revenue, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, as well as the U.S. Census Bureau. And we mash it all together and allow you the ability to log in as a administration and run analyses against the numbers. So that, for instance, if you wanted to compare your public works department, you may want to look at not only some of the towns in the surrounding area, but also other cities that have similar road miles, that have a similar land area and a similar population. So it allows you to look at your own spending in an entirely new light with very quick and easy-to-use tools to, again, make more informed and data-driven decisions as you move forward in the budgetary process.
How many communities do you, Mr. Chair? How many communities are currently using ClearGov?
Yep. So the, the company launched its commercial product in December of 2015, and we have 22 communities using the, the platform right now. I can name a few of them. City of Hayrow, Brookline, Dedham, Framingham, Sudbury, Wayland, Holliston, Easton, Upton, Norwell, list goes on. We're also working with, starting to work with cities and towns outside of Massachusetts. We recently launched the Georgia Transparency Initiative in partnership with the city of Decatur, as well as a Colorado initiative, a transparency initiative with the tax district of Pueblo West. So we're, we're rapidly expanding as a company. We're based out of, out of Hopkinton, so that's really been our home base and where we've grown our, our business from.
Mr. Chair?
Hmm?
Through you. You know, I've done a lot of research in, in regards to ClearGov, and I think that this will be a very valuable tool for the community to better understand the city finances. Lawrence historically has struggled financially. We are now in a position that we're financially very stable. And I think it is important for the community to understand how we got to where we were before, and, and as a community, make sure that things are in order. And us as lawmakers and officials here that make decisions, be able to have appropriate data to ensure that we don't go back in history and, and, you know, have to face the same financial troubles that we did before. I think this will serve as an opportunity to, to truly show transparency to the residents, to once again, let them know exactly what is going on with our finances. I think everyone in the city deserves the opportunity to know firsthand what we're doing with their money, because it is their money. I think it's important that they understand how it's been utilized. I, I do not have any further questions. I do want to thank, I, I want to thank you for coming out today and speaking on behalf of ClearGov.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Any other comments or questions by the committee? Mr. Rabbity?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For those here in attendance and for those at home, I just want to state for the record that we did receive a presentation on this at a previous full council meeting, I believe it was. I just think that's germane to our conversation tonight, that for those that might not be following along or just dropping in, that we have had a PowerPoint presentation as well as a previous meeting on this matter.
I, I would add that anybody listening to this or watching this can go to cleargov.com, click on Massachusetts, and go to the publicly available Lawrence page if they'd like to learn more.
I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
It's Mr. Bullock, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Who is your chief competitor here in the Commonwealth for the kind of services you provide?
Uh, I would say your chief competitor is a company called OpenGov.
OpenGov?
Yep. They're out of California.
Out of where?
Out of California.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. They offer a, a similar tool. I should say it's in the same vein, in that it promotes transparency. I think the main difference, well, there's a number of differences. One is in the user interface. If you look at an OpenGov site, you'll see that it is basically one chart, that you can select different funds and select years, and basically, it has a lot of dropdowns and menus that you can manipulate the data, which can be very, very intimidating to the average citizen and average resident that really doesn't understand how the government operates and even where to look. Our user interface is based off of infographics, which starts at a very, very high level. What are the total revenues and expenditures? And then allows you to click into and drill down as you see fit, rather than presenting a lot of information upfront. It tries to push out on bite-sized chunks, if you will. Two, we really believe that context is king. We feel that just putting the financials out there, and even putting them in pretty-looking charts and graphs, really doesn't advance transparency. As I mentioned before, just to see how much the city of Lorment, Lawrence spends on one department or the next is really not relatable for the average citizen, and is really difficult to, to grasp. So what we try to do is put it into context of other similar cities and really show the trending behind that data, so you can really get a, a better understanding of how it relates to, to other cities in the Commonwealth. And two, we also provide non-financial metrics. As I mentioned, we believe that demographics play an important role in the, in the decisions that the, the council makes and the city makes with regards to the budget. And so we offer demographics around population, age, daytime population, household income, housing prices, homeowners versus renter, a myriad of metrics. We also provide context around the education district. So for instance, in Framingham, if I could offer a story, their spending on education is 47% more than similar communities. Their budget, I believe, is approaching 100 million. And they, there was a lot of talk online that they were simply overspending on teacher salaries. And they said, "Well, we really don't think that's true. We think there's other factors involved." So we took data from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and were able to show that they had an abnormal percentage of special education students within the district that were driving the need for additional teachers. And indeed, their, their percentage of full-time employees was actually much higher than other school districts, and their average teacher salary was only 2% higher. So they were able to actually craft a story and better understand through data that it was really the head count and some of these high-need students that were, were driving expenditures in their school districts, and not the salaries. And this data was able to inform the public and educate the public, and quite frankly, educate some of the internal stakeholders around the data. And so it just kind of goes back to my story that just putting the numbers online, as our competitors do, really falls short of true transparency. You want to be able to provide context in the numbers. And lastly, we, we offer the ability for the city to provide commentary on every number. A good example of this is in the city of, town of Easton, their charges for services over the last five years- over the last five years were almost on a hockey stick. They were going up and up and up. The average resident may look at something like that and say, well, they're just raising all their, their fees for services. But what's actually happening behind the scene is that they bought a second ambulance, and that was being used by the surrounding towns, which they were charging these surrounding towns more and more, and they were recording that under charges for services. And so it was a very benign explanation as to why these charges for services were going up, but if you were just to look at the numbers by themselves, you would have missed that point. So again, we, we really excel and make a big focus of ours in providing context to the data, as well as a very clean and simple user interface.
Thank you. So, and I know that the council president, I think, I heard correctly, learned more about your organization, your business through the MMA conference?
That is correct.
In Boston. So again, time worth spending, if we have a chance, I think, again, next year, just to learn more about what kind of products are available to make us better decision-makers. Having said that, I also have, just a, just a, bottom line is, I think, I agree with the council president, if there's an opportunity here with short money, to be able to provide greater clarity, more information, context of what you speak of, I think that can not only be valuable for us as decision-makers, but also valuable for individuals, residents who want to learn more about how their government is spending their money and being able to put some context towards, so they can press the buttons to the elected official saying, we think we should be doing X, Y, and Z on some stuff that makes for better government. I also think that would make for better government, is that we also have a bit of competition here as well. I appreciate your candor, and that tells me that you're a person with some sort of integrity being upfront and mentioning and answering the question regarding who your competition is, and for that, I thank you. And for that, you get many points. I also would suggest, however, for this committee, before we go down a certain way, that we also hear from the competition and see what they have to say about their product. If they don't give us a response, I think we kind of know where we're going. If they do get us a response, we're going to be better decision-makers as far as which product we think fits us. So I, I, my suggestion or recommendation to the committee would be to, to extend the same kind of offer to an official, which I just opened up online, by the way, of OpenGov, and see if they're willing to come here to give a brief presentation to this committee. And then we can give it to the full council, give my recommendation, based on the discussions that we have. Do we think that ClearGov is the way to go? Is it OpenGov? And then at some point, what I don't want to be doing is criticizing, saying, you saw, you went to the, you went to the car lot, you saw the fancy car, you bought it right away. And I want to say, oh, no, 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 we, we saw the fancy car, we liked the car, but we also shopped someplace else, and we were able to compare. And yeah, we do like the first car because we saw the second car, but the first car's where you want to go. So it's the analysis that I have.
I very much appreciate that.
Yeah.
I'm happy to actually send examples of their sites, and I think that very, very quickly, you'll see how they differ. They're, they're, they're very, they're obviously different, so yeah, you'll, I'm happy to provide that information.
So that's my recommendation, Council President. I know that you're the author of this, I'm not sure what your feelings are, but that's my, my thought.
No, I think it's a fair, through you, Mr. Chair. I think it's a fair recommendation for us to be able to make the best decision for the city of Lawrence. I also had the opportunity to go on their website and do some, some, you know, digging in regards to it. I focused most of my attention, we're speaking of transparency here, so I want to be transparent, I focused most of my attention with ClearGov because I had the opportunity to see them in person at the Massachusetts Municipal Association, and that allowed me to have a one-on-one conversation with folks. But I did have the opportunity to go on the OpenGov website as well and do a little bit of research. And I think it's, it's fair to say, rather than, than saying, you know, I didn't give the other company a shot, I did look into it, but I've, I've been in constant communication with ClearGov. So most, most of my attention has been directed to them, and I think it's fair to, to let the public know that that's, that I've been a little bit biased, because I like, I like the service that has been provided, to be honest.
We, we recently had a head-to-head bid with this company in the city of Decatur, and the, the, the city officials were very partial to us, but they said, you know what? Let's show this two solutions to our citizens. And they invited some citizens in and let them pick which vendor they wanted, and they clearly chose ClearGov. So we're really, really proud of that. It's just a much more citizen-friendly tool, and I think you'll, you'll see that quickly.
But I think, I think it's fair, through you, Mr. Chair, your suggestion. I will be happy if there's no questions or further discussion. Tabling the matter here, until we're able to allow, you know, a representative from OpenGov, you know, to come out and speak, if they choose to. Should we set up a time?
I would recommend, since you've asked, Council President, if you're willing to go ahead and make that phone call, and I, I don't know what their schedule is like. We don't want this to be six months out, but a reasonable amount of time, a month or two would probably be the most, but, but I think that would be a...
I think that sounds fair. All right. So I'll gladly put in the call.
Is there any other points that anybody wants to make before we call a motion to table? Okay. Is there a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You guys have it. Mr. Bullock, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
Hope you have the opportunity to work together in the future.
Very good. Thank you so much. Are there any other items on the council agenda that we want to bring up? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a motion to stick around a little bit longer?
So move. Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn? Motion made to adjourn. It's been made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You guys have it.